All right, so I'm going to call this special meeting of the Public Site and Building Commission to order at 6:07. And, oh, I don't know, Dave's got a flag back there, we might have to. So we could do a pledge, so Dave's got a flag, we'll do a pledge. And if you can stand up and we're looking at your belly buttons, that's okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, great. So I'm assuming that we don't have any public input because everybody's part of the team. And correspondence, anything that we have is part of the project documents and project reports. So approval of meeting minutes from our regular meeting of April 28th. Everybody got those ahead of time and hopefully had time to read them, so I'll make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes of Tuesday, April 28th, 2020.
Second it.
So Gil's got a second. Any comments, anything, anybody notice that's needs to be updated, corrected, et cetera? Okay, let's vote, all in favor. I opposed. And does anybody have to abstain? I think not, I think everyone was at the last meeting. Okay, great, those minutes pass. And next is our old business, and first on that part is the construction project update, is that where we're going to start with, Geraldine?
That is, yep. Ken will give an efficient construction progress update, and then we'll talk a little bit about schedule, although that, obviously, since the notice was given to Rizzo just middle of last week, that we're going to be closed, that there won't be any occupancy of the school until September, I think the overall schedule is still in process, so we'll get a brief update in order to keep the meeting short.
Okay, so Kathy, just quickly, I see that John and Dino are joining us, so. And so Ken, you're ready to go?
Yep, ready to go. So currently, we are working on revised schedules now since the both schools have been turned over. And so just to go over the work from the last report for Johnson, hit the highlights, the transformer was set and energized, and we're continuing with the gym, CMU, you know, masonry at the gym, the second floor, we're moving along with the HVAC equipment, ductwork, windows, and kitchen, the underground plumbing is just about complete for Johnson, and that's about it for that portion. The work in progress, so we're pretty much all over the school right now, and just the way, because of that, I just reformatted this, so it's more in by phase, so I don't keep going back and forth. So basically, fifth grade addition, we've got site work going on, the gym, again, masonry continues, we're going to be completing some slab at the gym a little later on this month. And the second floor, ongoing with the ductwork and the installation of door frames that are coming in. The first floor, we've got the demolition started, and the MEP cut drop and make safe, the main office abatement has started. And then the roofing, we're finishing up the cafeteria roof, and we're going to be moving along over to the PE office area. And then there's a list of work that we're getting ready to start here. I don't know, if you want me to abbreviate this, I can skip this and go to the next one. It's, most of it's just concurrent work that we basically, once we get demolition started, we have the mason prep for the window openings, we start installing windows, metal studs are ongoing, the CMU walls are ongoing, so that's pretty much where we're at. We just have a lot going on all over the place right now for Johnson. Go over to Rockwell. Okay, so for the abbreviated Rockwell, same thing, we set the transformer energized, we've completed the second floor startup controls, and we're currently, we're still installing some of this work, the windows for the kindergarten wing. The roofing on the second floor is still existing, this is from the last report, this section, so we're further along than this. The kitchen excavation was completed, the grease trap was installed, and slab demo was completed, PCB CMU demo was completed at the caf and gym, and for the work in progress, we've should have completed the pedestrian covered walkway today, I know it was being done. The, so, main office area, we have windows and phenolic panels going on. And then for the first floor, phase foray, that is the part that was just turned over, the kindergarten wing was already, we're already working in there, installing windows, HVAC, equipment, and duct. So that's the difference in that phase, is we got the first six classrooms, and then just as of last Friday, we got the remaining classrooms. Nurse, we, out of the containment there, and doing some demo and MEP cut drop, there's still pipes and things like that away. The thing is, on the second floor, about 85%, the kitchen under slab plumbing, heat trace and pipe insulation, well, just got started, when that's finished, we'll backfill and get ready for the slab pour at the kitchen. And the gym, they're finishing up, ending the floor due to the failed PCB testing. They've formed the interior step for the platform from the gym up, and they've, are finishing up the slab cut for the locker rooms, probably in a day or so. And then we have other areas of work to start. The first floor classrooms, we're getting ready to prep and contain then, metal stud framing, door frames at the nurse area, the gym roofing is actually going to start tomorrow. The kitchen, I talked about the kitchen, the cafeteria, we're prepping for window openings, and that's, and then the gym, we're looking at starting the HVAC equipment, ductwork on the interior of the gym around the 18th. So there were a couple RFIs listed on the top of the, the schedule updates, and for each school, these two RFIs here for Rockwell are pretty critical for us. The bus overhang dimensions and elevations, and then the columns at the cafeteria exterior wall, we really need to get these so that we can continue there. And then there's two at Johnson that I should have started off with. The vestibule roof support and canopy, that's at the main entrance to Johnson, there's some questions there that we need answered on the support. And the masonry support at the gym and platform, there's a suspended wall that needs to be braced, and we just need to know how to do that. That's it.
And who answers those questions for you?
Perkins, right?
They will be.
Yes, yeah, John is looking at all of those right now, well, not right now, but he's in progress with all of those RFIs.
And he came out on Friday, Joe, I believe?
Yes, he did. I believe he walked both sites.
And what seems to be the issue? Is it a weight issue, is it a overhang issue?
Which one?
I'm sorry, for Johnson, the overhang, is it, it's the length of the overhang or something like that, what's the issue?
For the masonry support?
Yeah.
Yeah, we actually took out the masonry, and we're going to install studs and drywall instead to span between the proscenium opium for the platform.
Were these things that, were these things that Ken, you and John looked at together, and they're being, you know, Joe says they're being worked on, is that?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Is that a cost savings anyway, because you're not using the masonry?
Probably wouldn't be a lot, because you're going to just replace it with drywall and studs, and there's bracing now that they're going to have to do that they didn't have to do before.
Right, but masonry is very labor intensive.
Correct, yes, we'll find out what the difference is, and we'll definitely get the credit from the mason.
Okay, thank you.
And what was the reason again for the change?
Yeah, so the structural drawings did not show a support for the masonry, so there was a discrepancy between the architectural and the structural. So the structural drawings called for studs, and we called for masonry, so we opted to go with the studs as it was easier and should be more cost effective.
Okay. Ken, this also might be a good time to talk about crew sizes and any effect that you're seeing on COVID issues, on the progress of this work.
Sure, the concrete guy is just getting back, and he was up for some time, so we're playing catch up with the concrete work that's around the site, and trying to get that back in line, and then there's.
Basically, what we're seeing is the initial reduction in manpower from February to March, and we're seeing things like that continue, even as today, we had another issue with the roofer over on Rockwell, where he's got another case of a sick person who, you know, was commuting despite everyone's recommendations with other people, so it's been a manpower issue with him, to the point where we're looking at ways that we can supplement his manpower. It seems to be that's the, that's been the biggest effect on the job, is it's limiting, not only limiting the people that you can fit within a space, which, you know, we found ways to work within that, it's the headcounts themselves have been the biggest issue, and it's been masonry, concrete roofing, you know, right down the line, as far as the trades go, I would say the exception would be, the mechanicals have stayed pretty healthy, if that's, you know, a term to use. The other side of it is on the supply side, you know, doorbucks, roofing material, those are the simple things that we weren't seeing delayed two or three weeks ago, we're now finding out that there are delays because either, you know, a trucking depot is shut down, or they're using a reduced staff, so you're not getting the same turnaround on an order that you would typically get, instead of roofing insulation being two weeks out, now it's six weeks out. So it's, those are the types of things that we've run into and continue to deal with.
So then Jim and Ken, with the whole staffing part of it, so we're obviously seeing that reduced staffing is because either someone was exposed or someone was sick, and other people were exposed to them, maybe they, from what I'm hearing, you said they all drove in the same truck when they weren't supposed to, that kind of thing. So are we looking at, you're saying about supplementing the, hopefully get more workers to come in, is that a whole process that creates some kind of a lengthy delay because they have to get fingerprinted and all that whole process that was?
Well, you got a little bit of lag there, so I didn't hear, but I get the gist of what you're saying. So what we're looking at is, if we can utilize the roofer from Rockwell and his manpower pool, then it's a little bit easier. So that's what we've kind of initiated, and look, I hope we don't have to do something like that, because Gerald will be the first one to tell me, that's not so simple to do. So, but I think at the very least, you have to look into that, bring it to the nth degree so we can make a decision, because it is impacting the roof over at Rockwell at this point. So that's what we're, that's what we're looking to do with that.
And so, in trying to supplement, you know, finding more workers, if there are people out there that need work, and you're trying to, you know, can the subs hire them, or do they have to go through that whole process of vetting everybody first?
Yeah, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be what the existing roofer on Rockwell would want us to do, but, you know, at this point, you know, what we're trying to do is, and not to get into too much of a discussion, but we've been meeting with Dr. Carver and Geraldine, trying to work around these delays, and then prioritize the areas of the school that need to be done, and hopefully open for September, so trying to do a lot of things along those lines to point the resources that we do have, so they're all working in the right direction.
Right, because I guess I wasn't thinking of you trying to find extra workers for like the roofer or the mason, but are the roofers and the masons out there looking for more workers to bring in so they can get the work done?
What we've, what we've asked is that they do that, and then they also document on their own letterhead exactly what the steps they're taking, the hardships that they're encountering, and give us a record of what it is they're facing. I will say, most of them are very poor at that, but we're going to continue to obviously need that and want that out of all of them, so.
We do, Nancy, we do have a little more flexibility, just because school's not in session, there's no children there, and I know a lot of the extensive background check was because of the access to the students and the staff, and there's nobody there, so there is more flexibility on that front.
So that's an option if needed, to go find more workers somehow?
And I have.
If they're qualified.
And I have a call with Barbara at the state tomorrow, and one of the topics we're going to talk about is whether there's an impact on how the state views the job if we start supplementing subcontractors with other subcontractors, so we'll, it works well on the construction side, but we have to make sure that we're still abiding by all the state requirements.
Well, and I would hope they'd be more flexible, given the current situation.
I would expect that to be true, I think it might just be a matter of documentation, is what I'm hoping, is that if we document fully why and how, and try not to sole source as many things as possible, that, yes, they might be able to be flexible.
So in some ways, we have flexibility because school's out, but now we're being faced with both staffing shortages, and then, as Jim was saying, the whole supply chain. So I'm sure coming up with an ideal schedule is one thing, coming up with a realistic schedule may be something totally different. Correct. Any questions for Ken or Jim on this part?
Hey, Nance?
Yeah?
Okay, I have a question on Rockwell. Is there any advantage if we could get rid of the portable classrooms now, would that be a cost savings to that project, or is that would be a problem, would that allow Rizzo to have more access to the site, to the building, and also the front where the temporary canopy is put over, if that's removed, would that help the workers working in front there? Is there any advantage from taking that down? You're not going to need it now.
Yeah, you might.
School's not in session.
But if the schedule, if the schedule is, I mean, like I said, there's an ideal schedule, but I'm sure we can work out, Rizzo can sit down and go, all things being equal, here's the schedule, but if we're continuing to have staffing shortages with the subs, and supply chain's not, you know, it's way backed up, then we need to have a split students in September.
Yeah.
I think that really needs to be taken into consideration, not, go ahead, Christine.
Yeah, you cut out a little bit, I was just going to reinforce what you say, until we know that we have a space for the third grade to go and the first grade classrooms to go, I am not comfortable with removing the portables, and they know that. I mean, we've had extensive conversation about it, and they're trying to develop a schedule, I think, that would reduce them as soon as possible, I think Geraldine would agree with that, but I don't think we can just pull them out now until we have a good sense.
Well, and they're also, as we keep talking about, the portables are also currently being used to store classroom contents and furniture from other areas, because we're not, we didn't dispose of all of the furniture for the same reason. If the furniture, if the new furniture is not able to be delivered in time for school to open, then we need to put the old desks and chairs back in the classroom, so a lot of that material is stored in the portables, as well as up at the middle school, and so right now, it's just, and the portables actually were never packed themselves, and, you know, and had items moved out, so until we get closer to the sort of middle of the summer, we won't really make a decision on the portables. And that kind of leads me into another part of our report that I just wanted to report on, that we have an agenda item, but in terms of the furniture procurement, the furniture package is currently out to bid, the bids are due on May 18th, and so we'll have a better idea after next week as to what we're faced with on a budget side, and also on a delivery availability side. We're not hearing yet from any of the vendors that there are any issues, so we'll know more about that after the furniture bids are in.
Okay, thanks. Anything else for Ken or Jim on a construction update?
Or on anything else that's in the report that was distributed?
Right, so Geraldine did send around the monthly report, I don't know if anybody has any questions on that.
Then we'll move on, the next item on the agenda is the review of the budgets. So budgets have been updated for all approved expenditures through the last building committee meeting, you're looking at a Johnson budget tracking report at this point, we've invoiced overall on the project, both construction and other costs, about, we're at about 50% of the project cost at this point. And then moving down to the contingency area, where we always like to track what we've got left in contingency, we are still sitting at just about 1.6 million on the owner's contingency, and still have almost $112,000 left at Johnson on the environmental contingency. And to take a similar look at Rockwell, so Rockwell's billed a little bit, a little bit ahead of that, 56% over on the overall project budget, and at, and in terms of contingency, we have totally expended the environmental contingency of $250,000, there is about $675,000 in the owner's contingency there, and just a note that we will continue to, there is ongoing abatement at Rockwell, of course, and all of, any costs that are beyond, that are over and above the base bid package on abatement, will now be drawn from the owner's contingency, as well as the ongoing abatement monitoring, which I have also highlighted here on the budget, that will, that will continue to draw down now out of the owner's contingency.
So Geraldine, and looking at the percentages of the budget expended, are we about at that point in the percentage of the project completed?
Well, we're actually, because, we're actually ahead of these percentages on project completed, because of course invoices and the Rizzo requisition that we'll approve tonight are always, you know, kind of in arrears, so when you add on the current, the invoices that'll be approved tonight and the requisition, yeah, we're probably going to be up at about 65%, 65, 67%, which is about where we're at on the percentage of completion. And some of the things like, the furniture costs obviously kind of lag as well, so those invoices will come in towards the summer, at the end of the summer, when the furniture's actually installed, so those portions of the budget will always be later.
And so with Rockwell, any of the further environmental issues will come out of the owner's contingency, and then would result in a change order and change to the GMP? No, that's on the other side, okay.
Yeah, no, not, yeah, well, there may be, well, there will likely be environmental charges going forward that will increase the GMP, and will be, and that's what would be drawn from the owner's contingency. It won't, we're not looking at an overall budget change at this point, but there are some parts of the abatement that were not in the base bid documents that we will continue to see as change orders.
Any other questions, comments on the budget here? Next on the agenda is Perkins Deesman's additional services request, and I know Perkins Deesman is in the middle of, middle and whichever part, putting together all the information that we had asked for in several of our previous meetings, and also in the letter that we sent last week. So I don't know, is we have any update on that, because once we get all that information, we're going to want to have a meeting and review it, and go from there. So now change orders, I guess? No, yes?
I have not heard anything new from Perkins, I think they're still putting together their documentation.
Yes, that's what Joe had emailed me, so, and I figured what, we asked a ton of questions, I tried to put it together into that letter that we sent, so they're coming up with all that information, so there's not much more to discuss on that right now.
That's correct, sorry, I was on mute.
That's okay. So now we have change orders to look at?
Yes, we do, we have proposed change orders, we have two for at Johnson and one at Rockwell. This is the change order log for Johnson. The first change order to consider is PCO number 36, this has to do with providing drain lines, it's essentially site work for drain lines at the, at the track for the movable wall. They were omitted from the documents, so we had to add them, add them in, whereas at So again, PCO 36 in the amount of $4,664.69.
All right, so I'll, I'll make a motion, and then somebody can second it, and then we can talk about it further. then we can talk about it further. Because this is all the information we need, right, Geraldine? Everything's here?
Correct.
Okay, so I will make a motion that we approve change order number 36 for Johnson School in the amount of $4,664.69.
I'll second it.
John Perna seconded it. So Geraldine, as you said, it was omitted from the construction documents. It's something that's necessary. Any other input or questions on this? Anybody? Anybody?
If you, Joe can answer some questions. There were just drain lines added at the gym in order to drain the water away from the track of this door.
It's going to come out of owner's contingency.
Is somebody asking a question? I'm, or are we getting feedback?
No, I just said, is that going to come out of owner's contingency?
Yes, owner's contingency.
Yes. So this would result in a change to the GMP?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else from anybody else? Can we take a vote then? All in favor? Aye.
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 Is anybody opposed? I think we got everybody. Except for whoever's not here. Okay, so that motion carries next.
The other two proposed change orders that we have have to do with the additional cleaning that is required to comply with the COVID-19 guidelines on site. So what I included in the distribution package of materials was both a proposal, the proposal from KMP Facilities Maintenance, so they're on this, on the job in any case doing cleaning or would be doing the final cleaning certainly before occupancy. They were asked to provide a price to come every other day, they come, well, twice a week, to both schools and also to the field office. They are spending like four hours each time wiping down handle, door handles, railings, surfaces that people are touching. It's just kind of a regular, kind of light cleaning in order to prevent, or order to kind of reduce, I guess, any, any transmission on surfaces of the virus. So this is a cleaning that has been going on all of April, so far into May, every other, you know, twice a week during the, the working week. And we asked for a PCO that would tabulate the costs for April, May, and June, assuming that was a reasonable time period that we would need, at least need to go to continue to do this cleaning. So at Johnson, because it's a larger school, well, you'll see at Johnson and Rockwell, they're both fairly significant dollar amounts to do this cleaning. This is the change order for Johnson, change order 51. Each visit, they, it takes them 11 person hours. There are two, as far as I, I think Ken can, can correct me, but I think it's two people show up, that the crew in total is $75 an hour. It takes them about 11 hours each time they show up at Johnson to do the work at a cost of $825 a visit. We loaded the field office onto this change order because there isn't really any other place to put it. And there's, and the contingency is just more, more available here at Johnson. So you'll see the breakdown for site cleaning, five, five cleanings in April, eight in May, nine projected for June, and the total of this change order for cleaning is $21,656.25. And again, we're, we will be tracking this along with other identifiable costs that are due to the pandemic. And we'll be tracking those in a separate, like spreadsheet in case there's any, any question about what we spent and in case there's any money available at some point to, to cover those costs outside of the project.
You know, you should talk to Tommy Galliford, the Emergency Management Director. I know he has do a lot of work with that to, to group costs for the town. So this definitely fill into that, sit into that category, I think.
Definitely. I'll make a note.
And we can't kind of get around not doing this. This is something that we have to do. And are, are we going to have to do it into July, August, et cetera?
Well, I think that that, that remains to be seen. It would be, the proposal would, the, the costs themselves would not change. We would come back with a, with a separate PCO for July, August, however long we have to continue to make, to spend that money. But I thought that the three months here was reasonable at this point. The proposal would cover any potential cleaning through the end of the summer at the same rates.
So, hi, this is David. Can I just ask a quick question? We're paying $75 an hour per man, per person?
No, that's the total cost of the two-person crew. So I did this math. If you break it down to people and then the typical, typical upcharge on employees is two and a half times, it comes down to a $15 an hour, hourly rate for the cleaning, which is reasonable.
No, that's fine because I'm doing that at my buildings now. And I was going to say I'm paying $35 an hour per person.
Okay.
That makes more sense to me. Thank you.
Yep. Yep. Okay, so if we're going to do this, we have to do each school separately.
Yes, so this is the Johnson number, and then there's a separate PCO for Rockwell.
Okay, and so what's the number of the change order again?
For Johnson, it's 21,600.
Yeah, I can, I can see the amount now. I need the number of the change order if I make a.
Oh, I'm sorry, 51.
Okay, so I make a motion that we approve proposed change order number 51 for Johnson School in the amount of, and then you got to scroll again so I can see, 21,656.25.
I second it.
So who was the second? Who was the first second there that just jumped in? I can't tell everybody. Who was that?
John and Roy.
Okay, John and Roy together.
We travel as a.
And are you six feet apart? So this comes again out of orders contingency?
Yes, it does.
And creates a change in the GMP?
Yes, so if you, so here on a, on a change order log, you'll see that at this point with, with the approval of 36 at Johnson and pending the approval of change order 51 for the cleaning, we will have spent.
Sorry about that.
You know, $347,000 on change orders, which is just over 1% of the total construction cost to date.
Geraldine?
Yes.
Is, is there a limit to the state in terms of the overall percentage, the project that you can have in change orders? I thought I heard, I remember hearing that when we went to the original meeting.
I don't, not that I know of. I mean, we, we, we think a job runs well if it's, if it has 5% or less of a percentage of change orders. That's, that's extremely good. I, so I don't think we're in danger of hitting any threshold that the state might have. I think that the change orders are looked at on a, you know, change order by change order basis.
Terry, remember, or Terry, are you, is she on the line?
She was.
I, I just remember Costas making a big deal of it when we first started in the project. And I just don't remember what the overall percentage was.
I can check that out. Now I'll ask Barbara tomorrow, but I don't think we're in any danger of.
That's good.
Those, those numbers.
So on the cleaning, do you think the state will reimburse us?
I think it's, yes, I think it'll be a reimbursable cost under the current grant. The question is whether there might be some other fund of money at some point that would, that might kick in for this kind of special cost. We're tracking it.
They're, they're right. Tommy Galliford has asked, I don't know if Terry's on the line, she might have switched to the public hearing, but there was, Tommy Galliford was collecting information from all the departments about any extra expenses that we had, we had to incur as a result of COVID and FEMA. It was a FEMA reimbursement, but it's a, it's a, it's something that takes, I think, quite a while to get, from what I understand.
And you probably can't get reimbursed for it twice. So it's not like we can get state reimbursement and then get, or maybe the rest of the percentage of it. If we're only getting 46% back from the state, maybe we get the rest back through.
Right.
We can try to, at least try to do that.
Yeah, why not try?
Yeah, yep, all right.
I mean, I think it might be worth the conversation also, Geraldine, with Barbara, if, if some of those related costs might be allowable as additional to the project.
Adding it to my list for her tomorrow.
Yeah. All right, any other questions, comments on this change order, which is, I made the motion and it was seconded, so we can vote on it. But if anybody has any other questions, jump right in. Okay, let's vote on that. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? Okay, done with that. And then the Rockwell one's separate, correct?
Correct. So the Rockwell one is similar, the same rates that we just saw. But Rockwell has a lesser estimate of the hours that it takes to clean. And so for five cleaning visits in April, eight in May, nine in June, the total of this PCO, 44 at Rockwell, is 13,860.
Okay, so I make a motion that we approve change order number 44 for Rockwell School in the amount of $13,860, second by David Vorvath. The other questions on this is pretty much the same, so I think we've already asked all the questions.
It is the same, just to see the effect of this change order on the overall change order here at Rockwell. When we add in this 13,860, we're at 1.4% change orders against the total project cost. And, and you'll see that there, as we just reviewed, $696,000 there, reduced by another 13,000.
Okay, so let's vote on this one, unless there's any other questions. Done. All right, let's vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Done. So those are the change orders.
Yep, that's how we have for change orders.
Okay. And then the rest is all invoices and Rizzo application for payment, unless anybody has anything else project-wise that they need to ask about or get information on or let us know about. So if, like Ken and Jim have anything further on construction, or if Joe has anything on design, Christine's got anything from Board of Ed's side, please let us know. Or if anybody has questions.
Nope, I'm good. I'm going to jump off.
Okay. Yeah, some people are going to leave and go to the public hearing. Fun.
Have fun with that.
Yeah. All right, so I guess we can, I saw a couple of people unmute themselves, so I didn't know whether they had questions or not. But I think we can go on to the, the change orders, or not the change orders, the invoices. I have to get my pile of invoices so I can keep track of which ones we're working on.
Let me find a better.
So do we want to do the Rizzo application first?
Yes, so.
I did pick those up today, so I have them ready to go. Are you putting them on the screen or should I?
Yeah, I got it. Here we go. Needed to change my screen.
With Johnson, okay.
Yep, Johnson.
Okay, so I'll make motions, people then ask questions, et cetera. So I make a motion that we approve the Rizzo application for payment for Johnson School, application number 14, for the period, not finding the dates.
Top right, it's at the top right, period ending 4/30.
Oh yeah, period ending 4/30, 2020. And current payment due, $2,059,243.50, or 5 cents, sorry, 5 cents, yes. That was the second from Dave Olson. Any other questions, comments? These are all been vetted by Geraldine and there's, I have the signed and notarized copies here. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, nobody opposed? Good, that one passes. Next one for Rockwell. I make a motion that we approve Rizzo application for payment, number 14, period ending April 30, 2020, in the amount of $1,223,640.18. Nope, there it is.
There, sorry.
That's okay. It was another second from Dave Olson. Any other questions, comments on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Aye.
All set. Okay. Okay, so we have a bunch of other invoices.
You look too comfortable, Dave.
Yeah.
I think he's got us on half the screen, like some TV show or, he's watching sports.
Watching Kathy Act and Bop and Bop.
Sports from outer space. Okay, what are we going to start with?
Your choice.
My choice? Okay. I have special test, testing laboratories on top. Doesn't matter, I can switch them. So Johnson, Special Testing Laboratories, invoice number 34062, invoice date March 30, 2020 for Johnson School, in the amount of $2,379. And that's firestop, soils, a whole bunch of stuff. You can see it there. I need a second.
Okay.
Okay, and a second, I think, from Dave because he keeps popping up there, so. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Done. Special Testing Laboratories for Rockwell, invoice number 34063, dated March 31, 2020, in the amount of $1,030. Again, some more inspections for steel and firestops, other stuff, concrete. Dave, Dave seconded, I think? Yes? Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No. Okay, so next on my pile are Environmental Systems Corporation. Are these the ones that came in a little later?
Well, so apparently these were actually missed. So we have approved invoice, this is an invoice with the date of March. We, at the last meeting, approved invoices from April, and somehow these never came, probably my fault, never came before the building committee. So we have two invoices from them from March. They're both for AV installation work in the buildings.
Okay.
This one's Johnson.
Yep, so I make a motion that we approve invoice from Environmental Systems Corp., invoice number 1185702 for Johnson School, in the amount of 71, is it 71? 71?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's a second from somebody, John Menti, or Dave, somebody. Any questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And then for Rockwell, again, Environmental Systems Corp., invoice number 1185702. Invoice number one one eight five zero one. Invoice date March thirty-one, twenty twenty, the amount of twenty-nine thousand. Second, who's second? Second, Dino's second, everybody's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, done. STV, DPM. Okay, so STV. Make a motion, we approve invoice number nine zero zero one six eight nine seven. Dated April twenty-seven, twenty twenty, for Johnson School, in the amount of thirty-three thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Second.
Dave seconds. Any questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Done. STV for Rockwell School. Invoice number nine zero zero one six eight nine eight. For Rockwell School, invoice date April twenty-seven, twenty twenty, in the amount of twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. Dave seconds. All in favor? Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Done. Red thread?
This is for, this is for furniture at Rockwell.
Yep. So I make a motion that we approve the invoice from Red Thread, invoice number eight two six three zero seven. Dated April twenty-seven, twenty twenty, Rockwell School, in the amount of twenty-six thousand four hundred and nine dollars. Um, Dave seconds, Dave Olson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That wasn't an opposed, I think it was just a late, yes.
Yeah, it was a late one.
Yeah, that was a late one. Okay, and, that's, have IES, that, right?
Yes.
They have a invoice from IES, our commissioning agent, invoice number one four eight zero one for Johnson School. Period ending March twenty-nine, twenty twenty, in the amount of four thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. Dave seconds. What would we do without you, Dave? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, done. And also for IES, for Rockwell School, invoice number one four eight zero zero, period ending March twenty-nine, twenty twenty. Two thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-five cents.
Second.
Dave seconded, even though he's yawning. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, done. We have that Hearst Media on.
Yep. This is.
So this is for, go ahead, Geraldine.
I was gonna say, this is a charge for advertising the, the current furniture package bid in the Danbury Times.
So, is it one for each school?
Yes, two separate, yeah, two separate ads replaced.
Okay, so, but it's only one invoice, so I'll have to just.
Yeah.
Four oh eight sixty-five for each school, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I make a motion that we approve the invoice from Hearst Connecticut Media Group. Invoice number, I didn't.
Yeah, it looks like there's just a client account number there.
Yeah, that's okay. So billing period for the month of April. For Rockwell School, in the amount of four hundred and eight dollars and sixty-five cents. Dave seconds, all in favor? Aye, opposed, done. I gotta do the same thing for Johnson, so Hearst Media, Connecticut Media Group, for Johnson School, for the month of April, twenty twenty. In the amount of four hundred and eight dollars and sixty-five cents.
Second.
Dave seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, done. Uh, Perkins Eastman. One. You wanna do Johnson, or?
I'm gonna do, Johnson, number twenty-seven, for Construction Administration Services.
So I make a motion that we approve the invoice from Perkins Eastman. Invoice number six eight nine six two point zero zero point zero dash twenty-seven. Construction Administration, through the month of, for the month of March, twenty twenty. In the amount of twenty-three thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. Now, that's.
Oh wait, sorry, I got the wrong one up.
Sorry. Sorry.
That was my fault. I was looking at the numbers and thought that was, there we go. Okay.
So I got the right number, right?
Yes.
Okay. So that, I did make a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Whoever that was. And. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Done. Nobody opposed. So then we have Johnson for FFNE.
Okay.
Or do you wanna do Rockwell first?
Let's do the Rockwell construction on first.
Okay, yep. So an invoice for Perkins Eastman, invoice number six eight nine six one. Point zero zero point zero dash twenty-seven for Rockwell School, for the month of March, twenty twenty. In the amount of thirteen thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety cents. Dave seconds, Dave Olson. Any questions, comments, et cetera? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, done. And then we have the FFNE invoices for both the schools. Missing one.
Yes, now I want to, so we sent these invoices back, excuse me, for correction. Because they both, the furniture ones both included an interest charge that was in error. So what I'd like to propose is that we have, and Perkins is going to reissue, correct and reissue these invoices. But instead of waiting another two weeks to approve them, they're amenable. And I would recommend that we just approve the amount, understanding that a corrected invoice is going to be presented to the town. So the corrected amount is shown here on the screen. It just eliminates the, the interest charge that was inadvertently added to the bill.
Okay, so we're gonna approve the amount. So in this, the invoice, the interest was, there's interest on invoices going back to a couple of months?
It happened, yes, it happened once before, and we have not seen the credit for that. We actually, you actually approved an invoice that had interest on it. And we need to see that credit on a future invoice, so we're still pursuing that as well. Their contract, I mean, this is probably an automatic charge that their accounting department puts on. But there, but the Perkins Eastman contract specifically says, not only do you have sixty days to pay. But any, but it lists a zero percent interest on the contract for any past due balances. So hopefully, your accounting department has gotten the message, and this won't happen again.
Right.
Yes, me and Joe both spoke with them.
What was that, Joe?
Said, me and Joe Costa both spoke with them, I'm not sure how this got charged at all, to be honest.
I think the timing was back, like, during, like, maybe November holiday time. And there may have been a, we approved an invoice, and then the check crossed in the mail by the time the next.
It's occurred on two of the FFNE invoices, and it's been random months. And so I'm not sure what's happening with that, so I'll be on the lookout for it now, to make sure it doesn't occur again.
Okay, bookkeeping magic.
Yes.
Right, so we have, which one, Johnson. So make a motion that we approve Perkins Eastman invoice number six eight nine six two point zero one point one dash nine. For FFNE through the end of March, twenty twenty. And the updated amount is twenty-three thousand one hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-three cents. I need a second.
Second now.
So Dave seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nobody opposed. So Geraldine, what did you say? Can I just scratch this out and submit?
Um, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, they're going to reissue an invoice.
Yes.
I think for the purposes of communicating to Lauren Cunningham that it's approved. I would just scratch that out, put in the new amount and sign it, and then, but, so they can make the payment. And then they'll have on record both the new invoice and the old invoice that was actually approved.
Do we know if they'll wait for the new invoice, or will they go ahead and do it?
I don't know, I can let her know tomorrow. It's, I, I don't, I, I can talk to her and see what, what she wants to do about it.
Okay. Okay. I got the amount, so I'll write something on there. And then for Rockwell, the invoice number, for Perkins Eastman, invoice number six eight nine six one point zero one point zero dash nine. I'll write the new amount down. And the amount of twelve thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-four cents. Dave seconds. Um, favor, aye, opposed, done. So there was an environment one, but I think you said we had already done it. It was an original, it showed up in the mail.
Yes. Yeah, it, we, you approved it in last week, or last meeting.
Okay. And then, I have all the peers' letters of agreements, those are, like, we don't have to do anything with those except by me.
Right, the next action would be when they invoice.
Okay.
Yes, and he's, he's completed his review, sent us back the document with his comments. And I forwarded those on from the one room. They were fairly minor, so we're just finding to knows and getting it back to him. And then we'll have to set up a virtual PCR with Barbara again.
First, but we need paperwork signed, we need all that stuff reviewed by Tom and Chris, right?
They have to sign off on it.
Correct, so.
Yeah, there's other steps that occur. We also need the 504 officer to issue a letter.
And I think that's Chris, I don't think it's the 504 officer for the district, I think it's the town. And I think Chris said that he signs off on that.
Oh, he does, okay.
Let me, let me get, get in touch with both of them and see how they wanna handle signing off on that paperwork. They, I sent them a copy of it previously.
Okay.
You know, that, and that, at that point, they had responded that, yeah, let's have a third-party reviewer, we don't wanna, you know, with a lot of the time. So let me see how they wanna go about signing off on the final paperwork before we set up a meeting with Barbara.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, so anything else on our school projects? Does anybody have any other input, any other questions, et cetera, et cetera? Geraldine, do you have any more stuff for us?
I don't have anything else to report, so we're happy to answer any questions.
Is the next meeting on the twenty-sixth?
That's the next regularly scheduled meeting, it's May twenty-sixth, it's the day after Memorial Day.
Okay.
Nobody's going anywhere, right? I have a question on the whole schedule thing. Do we think we're ever gonna be able to get a schedule that is, like, we can adhere to or work with? Or is it always gonna keep changing just because of the situation?
Well, Rizzo does owe us a revised schedule that recognizes the fact that they now have sixteen weeks till they need to turn over the buildings for occupancy. And resequencing the work to take into consideration that they have full reign, you know, they, they can. Anything they want now is sequencing the work, we're done with phases. So they do owe us that schedule. What they told us last week was that they were, they have regular subcontractor meetings on Wednesdays. And tomorrow would be the day, they put the subcontractors on notice last week that there was gonna be a change and gave them some basic parameters. But I think tomorrow is the day that they're going to discuss specifically what that sequence of construction is gonna look like through the next four, four months. And my expectation is that after that, at that point, they would be rebuilding their overall schedule in a way that, that provides evidence that they're going to actually be able to turn over the buildings as of August twenty-eighth. So the, Chris, Dr. Carver, the school district has requested that the buildings, that the TCOs be issued no later than August twenty-eighth. School is scheduled currently to start on September eighth. And that leaves one week in between there, with a couple of weekends, for the teachers to set up their rooms. And hopefully, for the third grade to all move into Johnson. And that involves a move from Berry School, as well as contents moves from Rockwell. So they need at least that week to ten days to do that. So that's the deadline that we're shooting for with Rizzo.
Is that something that you think might be, like, in place for our next meeting? Or is that gonna be a little longer to try to get that together?
We'll tell them that the building committee wants to see that schedule for the twenty-sixth. Hopefully, they'll be able to get us something. What we're really looking for is evidence that they've rethought the way they're going to approach the project. And this would include what Jim had alluded to earlier, that they are also looking at ways to get subcontractors, if they can, to move resources into areas of the building that absolutely have to be finished for the school to occupy in September. So one thing that, that Dr. Carver has said is that they're not that concerned about the gym. So if we can move contractors into classroom buildings, they can certainly play outside for a while, like they did, like they were planning to do this spring. There's also, they need the kitchens finished, but they don't need the cafeteria. Because at this point, they don't even think they're going to be gathering kids in the cafeteria for lunch. They'll be delivering meals to classrooms, at least that's sort of, that's what they're looking at today. So we're looking at a way that Rizzo can move resources into classrooms and administrative offices. If the, and even if the other areas have to lag a little bit past the September date that school starts. Okay. So we will keep pushing them to provide that revised schedule. Of course, it's gonna be, it's going to be, you know, a work in progress the whole summer, depending on how the whole COVID-nineteen issue affects the project. But certainly, if that, if we didn't have that issue, there's no reason why they wouldn't be able to finish the projects in the sixteen weeks we have between now and August twenty-eighth.
Okay, any other questions, comments, et cetera, for either Geraldine, or Joe Colada, or Ken and Jim, who I think might still be on?
Right here.
Yeah, and then do you have any other things that you wanna add in, either Joe Colada, or Ken, Ken or Jim?
No, we're all set.
Okay. So I think we're good with the school parts, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. So I guess you guys can jump off, and the rest of you gotta stay, 'cause I have a little update on the police station for you. Thank you, Geraldine, thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Bye.
Thanks, thanks. All right, so with the police station, Roy and Dave Horvath. And me and Rich were up at the firing range for that meeting. I'm gonna have Roy give you a little bit more of an update, Roy or David, because I was a little late. Because I had another meeting that I was zooming on before I ran up there. So Roy or David?
I can start a little bit, actually, I didn't, I didn't even bring my notes in with me. But I thought it was a productive meeting that we had, walked around with their architect representative from Hoffman. I thought he was, he was pretty good, and, you know, he was, we spent about an. I thought he was, he was pretty good, and you know, he was, we spent about an hour there, walking through and looking at various areas, and he was gonna put together a, a package that we could at least, I assumed we were gonna be able to review, and it sounded like they wanted to move the work along very quickly, but you know, they did clearly recognize that we were, you know, looking at, you know, what, what his recommendations, we wanted to take a look at it, just review it. So I haven't seen anything come back, I haven't heard anything beyond that, but I don't know, Dave, what was your, what was your comments on that?
I'm just shocked to see how much that building leaks.
Yeah.
I haven't done this for a long, long time, and I know it's a single CMU wall, I get it, but still, I've never seen a building that, like, every couple of feet, there's a leak, like, I've never, ever seen that in my life, and I did, I was emailing back and forth with Lieutenant Libertini about the HVAC system and the scrubber that's gonna go in to clean the air. It is, so what's, luckily, what's good is this system is designed for a 75% recirculation, 25% fresh air. Depending on how you set that up, you can make it a positive pressure building, which I believe, if I read correctly under the guidelines, it is acceptable, and which is pos, which is good in the aspect of, it won't be negative, so you won't be sucking water through the concrete wall, you'll actually help it stay out a little bit. It's not gonna solve the problem by any way, shape, or form, but it will actually help if you got a slight, you know, .01, .02 positive pressure on, static pressure on the building. But even so, I still, like, one of the first comments out of the architect's mouth was, oh, this, this single wall unit is building, and it's kind of designed to leak. I, I was completely taken aback by that. Like, how, what do you mean, you design a building to leak? Really?
Yeah, I, I stayed around, so we did spend about an hour, kind of, John Fraley from Downs was there, he was the only one from Downs, and then the Sal from CT Masons, Roy, David, me, Pugner, Libertini, Rich, and, you know, walked around the inside, started to walk around the outside, walked around the outside to the back, and then a bunch of people jumped off and left, because the Hoffman fellow stayed for I don't know how long, he stayed as long as he needed to, CT Masons went and got him a ladder, and he went over, we, we stayed with him while he went up on the roof of the little portico over the entry, and he, he had, John from Downs went out and got him a bunch of lumber crayons, and he pretty much went over every inch of the outside and marked areas with the lumber crayon, and then took photographs and to kind of add to the report of, these are the areas that need to be remediated. So I stayed with him for a little bit, and I was trying to get him to kind of say a little bit more about what David was saying, like, this is a building that's designed to leak. Somebody was saying, I can't remember who, it might have been David, this is the kind of structure you put up for a warehouse, and so then that makes me wonder, is the remediation actually gonna do anything? I know, I think it was Lieutenant Libertini who said, or, and I think Pugner has also said, and we can't just call him Pugner now, he's our new chief, why don't we just put siding on the outside of the building for out the walls inside it? So I'm wondering, let's wait for the report, but I wonder if that's a better option than repointing all that stuff and putting a sealer on it?
Hey, Nancy, along that line, I, you know, and I don't disagree, same thing with David, the amount of water coming in is considerable. I think based upon some of our conversations with Marty to start off with, I think Marty wanted to, you know, kind of go step by step, as far as the way we're proceeding now. I don't disagree that we might have to go a different way, such as, you know, your suggestions on it, but I think, let's see what the Hoffman, I would recommend that we see what the Hoffman, you know, fix is, per se, I, I think Marty kind of wanted to see us proceed with the fix, okay? And kind of doing it step by step. You know, we might have to further go after it from there.
Right.
Might even go back to the design, but that's the type of thing, I think, at that time, I think we ought to go into executive session, spend some time with Marty and ourselves to kind of review it, and that might be, you know, as soon as we get this letter back, maybe, maybe we should step into that very quickly, if, if we have some concerns with Hoffman's letter.
Right, right. I also, I was also, I know we got a, like, because I always include everybody in the emails, and got another, well, I had gotten one, it was a couple of weeks ago, or maybe more, from Brian saying, why aren't you paying me? So I did reply to him and say, I understand your frustration, but you need to understand ours, we still have no CO on the building, and I know that's, you know, Downs responsibility, but here are a bunch of things that you helped with to make sure that they were remedied, to make sure we could get the CO.
Right.
And I was going through some old emails, and I actually found, I'll have to find it, and I can see if I can kind of put it together and send it to everyone. It had to do with whether a sealer was supposed to be applied, and Brian's actual reply was the block and the mortar were supposed to have the waterproof stuff, and, which would make it so you don't need a sealer.
And, you know, many of the, yeah, there were some, so there were some finger pointing in Hoffman's report about the design also, so, you know, I think that that's something we have to talk about in executive session, as we, and it might be very soon that we might have to do something like that, Nancy.
Right, I think once we get the Hoffman report back, and as I said, I was drilling that fellow, I can't remember what his name was, that was from Hoffman, he was very knowledgeable, and he kept pointing out areas where, Larry, he was pointing out certain areas where you see in the mortar where there were deficiencies, but then he pointed out where you could see on the inside where you see all that efflorescence or the calcification, but on the outside, when you see it, he said that that means there's water sitting inside the block.
Bleeding out.
Yeah, and it's not, and it's bleeding out.
Are there weep holes in the back?
There's weep holes in the bottom.
There are, and are they clear?
No, not all of them. There were reports in the Hoffman report that, you know, many of those were plugged to.
Well, part of it.
What they have, these serrated plastic pieces are probably like an eighth inch wide by maybe two inches tall, and like every eighth of an inch, there's a divider into the block, which probably got plugged, but yes, to your point, not all of them were running clear, there were a couple that were weeping a little water, that I noticed, but.
Because it seems like a lot of water is, is locked inside the block, and it's looking for a place to get out, and it's going out anywhere it can. If we could make sure that all those are clear, that would, you know, help the problem.
Well, the thing that worried me the most about that is the vast majority of the leaks were high level or higher.
Quite high.
Yeah, that tells me it's coming from the roof, isn't it?
So if you look at the overhang, I didn't get a chance to get on the roof, but if you look at the overhang, it did come out, and they did wrap over supposedly.
Yeah, but in a high wind.
Right, and the over, there really isn't much of an overhang.
Right.
The coke comes kind of down and over, but it doesn't really hang over much. And what Larry was saying too was that when you have that type of CMU wall, you either have a hollow, which is supposed to drain water and act a certain way, and then you have one that's not, and that's supposed to act a totally different way, and he, he, I couldn't get him to actually say, no, this is all wrong, but, because I'm sure he won't. He just kept pointing like, this isn't supposed to be like that, this isn't supposed to be like that, this isn't supposed to be like that, so, I was curious, but let's see, like Roy said, and David, we'll see what the report says. It's supposed to include the photographs that he took, they were trying to use a lumber crayon that would stand out, but when you stood back, I took a couple photographs, and you really can't see, you gotta, you see it, it's there, and when Mason see it, it's just difficult to see in a photograph, so. And it seemed to be worse on the, that front side that faces the parking lot, but the backside leaks is just as much.
Correct, correct. It depends on which way the wind is blowing.
It shouldn't depend on which way the wind is blowing, that's the sad part.
Yeah. And while we were there, I also pointed out to John from Downs, how the, all that trim on the backside of the building, the clear trim that had separated, was much better, but there's still a little, a much of, a little amount of separation where you can see the biscuits, and he said, oh, well, you know, when we come back again, we'll bring some sealer and we'll fill that up. They had, you know, obviously, remember, they took it off, cut it up into smaller pieces, put more fasteners on, et cetera, it's definitely not shrinking like it was where you could stick your finger in it, but it's still kind of shrunk some.
You go, just so you, I don't know if you can.
Yeah.
That's about $8,000.
I see that.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Informanters.
Yeah, Downs brought a bunch of lights with them, so it was easy to see in there. For anybody who's gone over there to look, you always have to either use your phone flashlight or a little flashlight, they brought a bunch of halogen lights and set them up, so it was ma, made it much easier to see inside. But all the marking that Larry did was on the outside. And Ryan Patrick from Downs has been, has emailed Chris Baldwin about getting a CO, because as I said, I believe the two permits were separate, there was one for the range and one for the main building, and so if the main building is complete, we should be able to get the CO on that and get that done and out of our hair. But I haven't seen any replies back from Chris Baldwin, although I've, when I've seen him in the building, he's talked about getting his, the binder out that he had of all the lists of unfinished stuff, and my remembrance was most of that is, has been completed finally. So we'll keep on that and see where we can go with that. So I think that's pretty much it for Police Station, unless anybody else has anything else.
So we're gonna wait for this report for further action?
Yes, there's not much else we can do. That, you know, we asked them to give us this report to review before work was done.
And that's a recommendation of what the cure would be?
Right, right. Well, actually, the cure has already been spelled out, when, when we had that meeting back in December, there was a couple of us there, Downs, Police Commission, Pugner, and so they had their step by step, do the walkthrough, and, and the cure is to repoint everything, and then they, they also recommend adding, putting a sealer on. Where they repoint everything is what the walkthrough was supposed to identify, so that, that idea of a cure is kind of in what Downs' step by step recommendations that they gave us back during the winter, how much of it is going to be, you know, what we get in that report, and I think we need to be able to okay it, or ask for more, et cetera.
Hey, Nancy?
Yeah.
Nancy, on the report it comes back, I mean, everyone seems to be pointing that they want to put a seal on it, you know, which is gonna be a considerable expense, you know, plus it's gonna go on, you know, going forward. I was getting the impression that they were gonna come back to us to pay for that.
I, I think that that was part of the recommendation that was in that report they gave us back during the winter, and I don't have it right here, but I think I remember saying it was gonna be an additional, it was gonna be, we would, it would be a change order, we'd have to pay something like $15,000.
That's, that was somewhere where I was recalling also, Nancy.
Yeah.
And I don't know, we, you know, again, let's see what the report comes back, and then I think we probably have to do executive session with Marty and discuss that, because, you know, again, now we're going with change orders again.
Right, yep. I agree. All right, anything else on that? Or is good?
I only have one question, Ashley, the police now are taking their training at the State Police Training Center, and I'm sure they're not doing it for free, and I haven't seen any numbers that they're charging us for this, so when we delay all these, solving this problem, we're paying taxpayers' money to the State Police or the, the state of Connecticut, is that correct?
I, I don't, I, I don't think we've ever heard that they're paying anything extra, or, I don't recall anything coming up, because I think.
Because shooting ranges are expensive.
They haven't been, heard anything. They haven't been able to use the shooting in that building for a long time.
Yeah.
So.
Right.
They've been going.
I think they've been going up to the FCI at times also.
I heard the State Police, but.
Well, they, they're using a couple, according to Lieutenant Libertini, they're able to do, but they're still not able to qualify because of the ranges can't handle some, I guess, of the ammunition that they actually use, so they're not able to qualify everybody. So there's people that are able to get a pass, I guess, from the state that they can push it back a couple of months, but that's coming up, and then they have to requalify, and they just can't do it at the range they're going to. So that's an issue, I guess.
Yeah, high, high velocity bullets.
Yeah.
And the walls don't agree.
Right, well, they, they've been going out, like you said, for, for a long time, that range, old Police Station hasn't been usable in a very long time.
Right.
So that's been part of their, if it costs anything, it's been part of their budget long before we started this project.
Interesting.
All right, anything else there? I don't have anything on the municipal center renovation. And if nobody has anything else, is everybody good to do, we do our next regular meeting on the 26th, Tuesday, 26th, which is two weeks, is everybody good with that?
Good.
It would be this, this format again, with Kathy smiling face, stop smiling. Kathy has to start the meeting on time.
I just want to know what she listens to in the background, because she's always just bopping around, happy as can be.
I had a little moment where I forgot what I was supposed to do, I had my alarm set, it just wasn't set for the right time.
I know, I was, I was waiting for Kathy, we were all waiting for Kathy to let us in, so I finally called her.
I showed up, that's all that matters.
All right, so motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'll second it.
Jill seconds, John third, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, done, go away, Kathy.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you so much.